At 6:30 PM. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Counselor Abra Zapsin, Counselor Holland?
Here.
Counselor Wheel?
Happy to be here.
Counselor Sheldon?
Here.
Counselor Blum?
Here.
Counselor McGuire?
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business this evening, I'd like to invite Mr. Brett Bennett up to the podium. Mr. Bennett, please state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Brett Bennett. My address is 55 Sedwick Place, Cherry Hills Village, Colorado.
Welcome.
Thank you very much.
Floor is yours.
I just want to thank all the council members here and the mayor for honoring ALS Awareness Month here in Cherry Hills Village for the month of May 2024. My father came down with this disease in 2006 and died from it in 2010. And it's an awful disease and it affects a lot of people each and every day. And I just am trying to raise as much awareness about this disease as I possibly can. And I thank you guys very much for having ALS Awareness Month in the month of May here in Cherry Hills Village. Thank you. I'm here with my mother and my sister and my daughter and my wife.
Thank you all so much for being here.
Thank you.
And Dan, we knew your father very well.
Yeah. I think I've been in a meeting with you before.
Well, thank you for bringing it to our attention as well.
Thank you very much.
And next, Ms. Brenda Sheldon, the lovely mother of our very own Dan Sheldon. Take your time. In the interest of brevity, my son Dan will read the rest of my message.
Okay, thank you. The rest of Mom's message is as follows. I was diagnosed with bulbar onset ALS 17 months ago. My first symptoms were slurred speech and choking. I have now totally lost the ability to speak, eat, and drink. The reason I wanted to address you tonight is to show you the adaptations I have made which allow me to lead a fairly normal life. I compensate for being nonverbal by using a text-to-speech app on my phone. With a wireless keyboard, I can type much faster than on my cellphone. This is my lifeline to the world. After it was too late for me, I discovered that you can digitally bank your voice. If I had done that, the voice you would have just heard coming from my cellphone would have sounded just like me. When you are no longer able to eat because of the necessary muscles in your throat and mouth no longer work, there are two options. One is do nothing and you eventually starve. The option for survival is to get a feeding tube. So six months ago, after losing too much weight, I opted to get a feeding tube. And after many ups and downs, I finally got the hang of it, and now it is just part of my daily routine. Although I must admit, I go to bed dreaming of hamburgers and lamb chops. I am under the guidance of a fabulous team at the ALS Clinic at UC Health, and my family and friends have been with me every step of the way. It does take a village to manage this devastating disease. Again, thank you, City Council, for this opportunity and for your recognition of ALS Awareness Month. Thank you, Mom. Thank you to the Bennett family very much as well.
Thank you, Mrs. Sheldon, for coming and sharing your experience with us. I'm sure your family is so grateful and your friends to have you still with us. I would like to invite Counselor Sheldon to read the proclamation.
Bunch of whereases and stuff here, so give me just a moment. A proclamation of the City Council of the City of Cherry Hills Village designating May 2024 as ALS Awareness Month. Whereas ALS, known by many as Lou Gehrig's Disease, is a progressive fatal neurodegenerative disease in which a person's brain loses connection with the muscles, slowly taking away their ability to walk, talk, eat, and eventually breathe. And whereas every 90 minutes, someone is diagnosed with ALS and someone passes away from ALS in the United States. And whereas the mean survival time with ALS is two to five years from the time of diagnosis. And whereas ALS has no cure. And whereas people who have served in the military are more likely to develop ALS and die from the disease than those with no history of military service. And whereas securing access to new therapies, durable medical equipment, and communication technologies is of vital importance to people living with ALS. And whereas clinical trials play a pivotal role in evaluating new treatments, enhancing the quality of life, and fostering assistive technologies for those living with ALS. And whereas the ALS Association celebrates the 10th anniversary of the Ice Bucket Challenge through a renewed commitment to galvanize public awareness and supports funding leading to significant investments in ALS research. And whereas the City Council of the City of Cherry Hills Village supports accelerating the pace of discovery, fueled by the hope that one day ALS will be a livable disease for everyone, everywhere, until it is cured. And whereas ALS Awareness Month increases the public's awareness of people with ALS's dire circumstances and acknowledges the terrible impact this disease has, not only on the person, but on his or her family and the community, and recognizes the research being done to eradicate this disease. Now therefore, the City of Cherry Hills Village hereby proclaims that May 2024 be designated as ALS Awareness Month in the City of Cherry Hills Village, and urges all citizens to join in supporting ALS research, advocating for increased funding, and standing in solidarity with those affected by this relentless disease. Presented at this regular City Council meeting this 21st day of May 2024. With that, I would like to make a motion. I move to approve Proclamation II, Series 2024, Designating May 2024 as ALS Awareness Month.
Second. It's been moved and seconded and thirded, and I'm sure fourthed and fifthed. All in favor?
Aye.
And I'm sure there's no opposition. Thank you very much to everyone. Thank you all for being here to help us support this worthy effort. Next, we have audience participation on the agenda. And so we welcome other guests who are here to address the council. If you're new to this process, I just wanted to give you some information about how this works. If you, there's a sign up in the back. If you haven't already had an opportunity to sign up to address the council, please do so. There, I will call people in the order that they're signed up. There's a time limit of five minutes per speaker. There's a little set of colored buttons on the podium to help you know as the time is coming up. Attendees must not interfere with the orderly function of the meeting, and there are no public hearings today. I also wanted to let everyone know that if you haven't come to the public comment part of a meeting before, sometimes it's a little awkward because it's not a dialogue. It's not a conversation where we engage back and forth, and it's not really a question and answer either. And the reason for that is that open meetings laws require the City Council to disclose any topic that we will address in a meeting in advance. And so we can't just spontaneously engage in a dialogue. So the way it usually works is that if someone brings something to our attention during the public comment period, we might, at a later point in the meeting, direct our staff to look into it further or to take whatever next steps might be necessary. And so with that being said, I wanted to let everyone in the audience know that the City Council is aware of some very alarming and concerning behaviors that have been taking place over on the west side of the village, near St. Mary's Academy. And we are already working with our staff to research possible actions. I know our police department has been very actively engaged with the situation and is proactively monitoring things moving forward. So I just wanted everyone to know that we are already aware and we are already moving in that direction. But we still welcome anyone to come and speak to us about any topic. So with that said, the first person on the list is Cindy Altberger. And it sounds like Jason Altberger as well. Okay. So you start by just saying your name and address for the record, and then, as I said, you'll have five minutes.
Okay, so Cindy and Jason Altberger, and we live at Three Red Hawk Run, Cherry Hills Village, which is in Buell Mansion. We've come to talk about two different things of concern. The first one is somewhat minor, but I don't know the answer, and I've been trying to get it for five years. We live in Buell Mansion. We have a lake in our neighborhood. It is full of goose poop and beheaded animals and whatnot, and it's beautiful. And I know that there's an easement, and one side of the grass belongs to Cherry Hills Village, one side belongs to Buell Mansion. But it seems like there's a lot of disparity and uncertainty and a lot of finger pointing as to who's responsible for what. And we talked about it at some of our HOA meetings. And I just think at some point, we need, everyone together needs to address and figure out who's responsible for this side of the grass, who's responsible for the other side of the grass, and who's responsible for the actual path. Because we can't walk our dogs. We, I mean, you just can't walk there. I know the geese are an issue in a lot of places, and we can't get rid of them. But if we can't get rid of them, then we need to figure out how we're sort of cleaning up after them. And I've brought it up many times, and like I said, there's a lot of finger pointing. The other issue that we wanted to bring to the City Council is a little bit more directly related to us. We are doing a small landscape construction project in our yard, which includes putting new pavers in. But most importantly, we, what do you call?
Our gas line.
We brought a gas line in, and we channeled it on our patio to put in a built-in fire pit. What we've come to find out, and it's a really long story, is that our contractor did the gas line before they even applied for the permit. I have spent many, many hours on the phone with a gentleman named Jan. I will say that he is fantastic. I don't know him. He has been very patient with me because I'm kind of going between our landscaper, the gas company, and Jan and wanting to make sure I know what I'm talking about. But it's very upsetting to me. I'm sure the gas company did the line right. But we have this open trench. The gas line was put in last Monday, May 6th, or two Mondays ago. Jan confirmed, Jan confirmed that they didn't even apply for the permit until Thursday, May 9th. He was really great. He's the first 10 days. He did it expedited, and I very much appreciate that. He explained to us that the second piece is someone who's maybe outsourced and has 10 business days. Well, what I also come to find out is Jan called to say that there is no penalty. There is nothing that's going to happen to this gas company for doing what they've done. And again, I'm sure the work they did was great. But I have an open channel in my back patio with a gas line that hasn't been approved. And what if it doesn't get approved? And I know that this is fairly common with a lot of contractors. But in this case, it's gas. I live in a neighborhood where there's a lot of people. But I'm stunned and I'm disappointed and disheartened to know that this company, there's nothing, and no wonder they don't care. It has delayed our project several weeks. If you drive by my house in the front, there's just, the work had to stop because we need two inspections before they can close it and one after. But we're still waiting for approval for the permit, for the work that's been done, to then have an, two inspections, to then have them come do the work, to close it, to then have a final inspection. And I don't know if you want to.
Yeah, no, and to be clear, we wanted the work done right. We want, it was in our contract that there was supposed to be a permit. So we absolutely insisted on the work getting done the right way. And I think that's, we found out after the fact, we wouldn't have let the work go forward if the permit wasn't in place.
Well, that's a whole nother issue, that they weren't sure about the permit. But I, I don't know, and again, I appreciate you sharing, like, we haven't come to these meetings before. But how can this be? How can these contractors, especially when you're dealing with gas, just a slap on, like, nothing for doing work that was applied for the permit afterwards?
Well, thank you so much for your comments. And as I mentioned, it's not a back and forth, but we will have our city staff follow up with you about that. So thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Pia, and I apologize if I don't pronounce your name correctly, Dear King? Oh, great.
And we're actually going to come up, if it's okay, as a collective joint family, so Catherine Burge is the next name on the list.
Oh, sure, yes, okay.
Same topic.
Great, welcome. So state, yep, name and address.
Pia Dear King. I live at 19 Sedwick Drive, Cherry Hills Village. And I'm Catherine Burge, and here with my husband, Peter Burge. We live at 17 Carriage Lane.
So thank you for acknowledging before we got here about the ongoing issue that over the last couple of weeks, I know that you guys all are well aware, and we appreciate, especially this man out here to our left, who I know has been doing hero's work to chase this problem down. But I think, I know that we're not the only ones here today representing a group of very concerned parents. So what we wanted to petition you all today is to amend the open carry laws for Cherry Hills Village. We're asking that the current federal statute of restricting open carry of firearms within 1,000 feet of an elementary, middle, or high school be extended to our municipality. We need to enable our local police to enforce what is already federal law. As parents with children in CHVE, I have a fifth grader there and also a third grader at St. Mary's Academy.
And I have a almost kindergartner at St. Mary's.
We were closely following the events the week of May 6th, when a young man was seen repeatedly in the vicinity of St. Mary's Academy openly carrying a firearm. We understand fully it is within his rights to open carry, and at no point did he break the law. And to our knowledge, he did not step foot on school property. But that does not make his behavior any less alarming. I think nearly all of us can agree that exercising your right to open carry in a community park within a few hundred feet of homes and in close proximity to a school is atypical behavior of a responsible gun owner. We also learned that when he spoke to Cherry Hills Village Police, he was shocked that his actions would have caused alarm for the St. Mary's School community. I think a generous assumption here is that his response reflects his immaturity. But I think it's also of grave concern that a man with access to firearms would not have the reasoning skills or impulse control to understand his behavior would be perceived as threatening. A judicial officer seemingly agreed with the latter point and has since granted a temporary restraining order. I believe that's with Arapahoe County. But this judge decided that the very person we're here talking about was someone who needed to be restrained within our community. So while we await the decision on a permanent order, I believe that's scheduled for 29th next week, we as a community are asking for legislative action to be taken. Our police department stepped up in remarkable ways that week with increased police presence at both CHVE and St. Mary's, and constant, and clear communication with school administration. St. Mary's also deployed enormous resources to try and to ensure the safety of our kids. So we truly could not have asked for a better response, but you guys are all limited in what you're able to do. It is simply not feasible that every time a potential threat arises that we, especially as parents, have to tackle these things as one-off and chase down a temporary restraining order, be working incessantly with schools, managing parent communication. It's an inefficient use of police resources and the judicial system. Not to mention, it has been an incredible strain on both school resources, mostly on St. Mary's. So today, we're simply asking for federal law to be extended to our municipality. You need to empower our police to enforce a buffer zone for open carry around our schools and authorize them to make an arrest for anyone in violation. We're asking that clear markings be posted 1,000 feet from the boundaries of our schools as a school zone. And we're certainly not delusional to think that this alone is going to eliminate the problem. But we should all eagerly give our police every tool available to mitigate threats to our kids. And I know, because you guys are all aware, I think we've all asked ourselves this question, is what would we all say if three months from now at the start of school, or God forbid, at camps this summer, there was a school shooting at CHVE, either by this kid or another person, and one that could have been mitigated, mitigated should the buffer zone have been in place? So we hope this council comes to the right conclusion that doing nothing is an option. And, you know, I think process-wise, Kat nor I are lawyers, nor do we sit on this council. So I think process-wise, understanding the limitations of both boundaries and penalties, I assume that's of course up to all of you. So I think we are just starting from a point of expanding the federal statute as a bare minimum. But boundaries and anything that comes as an extension of that, we would look to this committee to make the right decision.
Thank you.
Ms. Burge, did you want, did you have any further comments? Or Mr. Burge?
Maybe there's just one thing I would add. I think everything that Pia stated is absolutely right, and we collectively agree with. And there are a lot of other parents that sort of stand behind the same statement. I think what's been really interesting about the process, and we've had great conversations with Chief Lyons to better educate ourselves as citizens. But it's been frankly really shocking to discover that the federal statute of this 1,000-foot limit doesn't apply to our local community. Shame on us for not knowing better, but now that we do know, we want to do better. And it does feel like the very bare minimum that we can do on behalf of our kids. There's nothing more precious. I think you guys, more than anyone, know the incredible resources that are expended in this community. Those that have made the decision to move here, oftentimes because they want the close proximity to some of the best schools in the state. But also those that are traveling from other communities in the city to send their schools to Cherry Hills Village. So I think I speak on behalf of both of those groups when I say this feels like the very bare minimum that we can do. There's so much more that we would like to do, but this feels like a very common sense and pragmatic first step and one that we can take as, you know, as a resident of this community. So thank you all for the consideration. We appreciate, again, Katie, the acknowledgement upfront. Thank you.
And then next is Rachel, is it Quincy?
Yes.
Again, just state your name and address for the record, please.
Rachel Quincy, 4301 South Holly Street, and hi, Chief Lyons. And I'm going to follow up on my fellow parents. I'm here today to request a City Council to enact an ordinance to adopt the Gun-Free School Zone Act of 1990, which is the 1,000-foot school zone. And open discussion to what more can we do to further protect our schools and our kids. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And then is there anyone else who wouldn't just sign up or just address the council? Okay, seeing none. We will move to the next item on the agenda, which is reports from members of city boards and commissions. I don't see any here. Consent agenda.
Mayor, we'd like to remove Item 7A from the consent agenda.
7A has been removed.
Move to approve consent agenda except for 7A.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda 7A, the minutes from the May 7th meeting. Counselor Blum?
Both myself and Susan were not here, so we could not vote on that issue.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion? Oh, well. Does an abstention count as a quorum?
If three of five vote yes, then that's majority.
So yes.
Move to approve the minutes, 7A.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? New business, resolution. New business, resolution eight, series two thousand twenty-four, authorizing the city to join with other local government entities as a participant in the Centennial State Liquid Investment Pool. Director Farman.
Good evening. Tonight, we have that resolution for consideration that would approve the city joining with other local governments of Colorado as a participant in Centennial State Liquid Investment Pool, also known as C-Slip. And before we discuss the details of that resolution, we thought we'd take this opportunity to update the city council on the city's current investment portfolio and rates of return. So here are the city's investment balances by type at the end of twenty twenty-three. And as you notice, there's a balanced mix of short and long-term investments, all that are highly rated investment securities. Through various types of investment types, the city is able to invest every public dollar and maximize investable balances. So as a result of these strategies, in twenty twenty-three, the citywide investment earnings were over one point four million dollars. So thank goodness for high interest rates. Before we go any further about the resolution and details about that, are there any questions about the city's investments?
Can't look into you.
I've already talked.
Okay.
Yeah, me too.
No questions? Okay, please continue.
All right, here's a little bit of background about local government investment pools, also known as L-GIPS. Most states, of course, offer different types of L-GIPS, and they also regulate these. So as just shown on the previous slide, the city had seventeen point eight million in L-GIPS at the end of last year, and this is a key management tool that the city uses. We can transfer funds from those accounts to other city bank accounts to pay for bills and payroll and things out of the city's checking accounts as needed. So highly liquid funds. There are now four L-GIPS in the state, and the city currently participates in two of those. The remaining non-participating L-GIP has recently experienced some key personnel turnover, so the city has not yet joined that, that third L-GIP. So tonight's resolution would approve the city participate in C-Slip, which has recently been approved as a L-GIP by the Colorado Division of Banking. C-Slip is being recommended for additional L-GIP diversification. It has no account minimums, a broad management team, and clear separation of administrative duties, while also maintaining a triple-A S and P credit rating. Tonight's resolution approves participation in the pool, but there is a zero minimum contribution requirement for funding, so the city would control if and when it would make contributions. This resolution to join C-Slip is also requested for the city to be immortalized as a founding father in the L-GIP and to also sponsor myself as a board member in the trust. Oh, I'll go back here. The village, along with the city of Centennial, is also voting on the same resolution this evening, and their finance director would also participate on the board. So if, if approved tonight, I've looked forward to the opportunity to work on this board while also serving the city and other municipalities by delivering a distinguished local government investment pool.
And Director Farman, if you could elaborate on that just a little bit, just to be clear to anyone who might be watching, what role your involvement with the board is, just to allay any concerns there might be that that's a conflict of interest?
Sure. And with the other government investment pools, it's very common, all of the other pools are made up of board of trustees of other finance officers from municipalities, school districts, metro districts, and there's approximately eight to ten board members on those other L-GIPS currently. So there would be five on this new L-GIP, and I would be one of them to handle, there's an indenture of trust because all of the municipalities put their money into, into this pool, which is held in trust and managed by the board of trustees. So the board of trustees adopts the investment policy and adopts certain controls and contracts with administrators and portfolio managers. And the board of trustees is all on a volunteer basis, so there's no financial gain for, for anybody. But there is a lot of value, I think, to the city. For me to be on this pool, I would know the inner workings of the pool. I would have a voice in the administration and the policies of the pool. So I'd have that intimate knowledge of that, other than other municipalities that wouldn't have that information. So I think there's a benefit to the city.
Would you be serving as an individual or as the director of finance for the city?
As a director of finance for the city.
Okay.
That's correct.
Any other questions for Director Farman?
I just have one question. Is there any issue with regards to the time allotment for you to be doing this extra gig, if you will? It's going to take you some amount of time to, to serve this role. Is it going to take away from your day-to-day responsibilities here at the city?
It's going to be very minimum. The startup time has been a lot of time that I've spent during my lunch hour before, after work. So I talked to the city manager, and we agreed that it would not take a lot, it wouldn't take any of my work time during, during the workday or my work responsibilities. So a lot of that has been done outside the normal work hours. We would have quarterly board meetings in the future, and some of that might be an all-day board meeting to handle certain affairs, but that's on a quarterly basis. So we've gotten a lot of the startup time out of the way. So I actually have a, a board meeting next week, but I, I'm on PTO that day, so it would not take away any, any time.
Okay. Thank you, Director Farman.
And would the money that we're putting into this trust be additional money on top of what we've already got invested in the others, or will we be diverting money from the, some of the other trusts into this one?
That's a great question. It would all be part of our overall investment strategy. So right now, we don't have, really have any defined amount of contribution. And I talked to the city manager today a little bit about this. We'd probably want to see this pool get underway a little bit and see what the yield is. There are also some startup costs involved, which is going to affect the, the first several months of yield. So it'll just depend on how all of that shakes out, but it'll just be part of the overall strategy, the overall city investment portfolio. There might be some treasury bonds that mature this summer that we might look at possibly putting into this pool. Just depends on what the market is doing at that point in time. So it'll just be one of those overall decisions.
Okay, thank you. And again, what we're voting on tonight is just authorization to participate, not necessarily actually putting any money at, like, tomorrow, yeah.
Exactly.
Other questions? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
I move to approve resolution eight, series twenty twenty-four, a resolution authorizing the city to join with other local government entities as a participant in the Centennial State Liquid Investment Pool.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Next, council bill three, series two thousand twenty-four, amending the twenty twenty-four budget and approving a supplemental appropriation in the general fund for additional police officers on first reading. Director Farman, again.
All right, thank you very much. We do have a first reading of this ordinance, which would amend the twenty twenty-four budget. Back in March, as council would remember, the city did hold a council retreat, and one of those discussion items, we talked about the, the financial forecast and also the construction, the capital improvement plan, but one other item was to talk about public safety, and Chief Lyons gave a presentation discussing the department needs and the concept of possibly adding some new police officers in the, in the near future. Where council was very supportive of that idea and actually wanted more immediate implementation, so they had recommended hiring those officers as soon as possible. So tonight's amendment would approve the plea, the three new officers in twenty twenty-four, but right now, that two hundred and twenty-two thousand four hundred, that would be the budget amendment, would be for six months of personnel and operating costs for those officers, and right now, no additional patrol vehicles would be needed. Of course, that's very ambitious. It would be challenging to hire those officers that rapidly, but that may happen, so we would at least have the funding in the budget to do that. And then going forward, these officers would be part of the twenty twenty-five proposed budget and ongoing. If we look at the adopted budget compared to where we would be if the council did approve this budget amendment, of course, they would be in the general fund, and you can see that we would be increasing appropriations by two hundred and twenty-two thousand four hundred, yet with the other anticipated, expected revenue updates, our fund balance is actually anticipated to grow a little bit by the end of this year because we have had unexpected sales tax and also the investment income revenues from the end of twenty twenty-three ongoing through twenty twenty-four is expecting to be relatively high and, and above the budget. So we do have an expected increase in fund balance over the budget at the end of this year by approximately two million dollars. Any questions about the adopted versus the amended budget information?
Councilor Blum.
I, I just have a practical question for the chief. How feasible is it to add three officers at this point in time, if we're looking at July one approval of this?
Thank you for the question. If you had asked me this last week, I would have told you it's not looking so great. However, for probably a variety of reasons, we've seen a tremendous level of interest over the last seven days, and we are holding oral board interviews on Thursday with six applicants to vet and identify best fit for the organization moving forward. So the, this budget amendment is, takes effect July one. We should have people potentially on the books by end of July, first of August, and then depending on their level of experience, either on the road or attending a local academy.
So how long is it before they'd be active on the police force after going to the academy? What's the timing on something like that?
It requires academy, academy sponsor.
Turn on your.
Microphone.
Sorry, thank you.
Got a little ambitious, apologize. The academy is five months long, field training is an additional four months after that. So from date of hire to solo status, working the, the patrol environment by themselves, it's about nine months. The applicants that are coming to us with lateral police experience, obviously they don't need the academy. Their field training program is typically accelerated somewhere between eight and ten weeks before they can fill a, a position in the field environment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So somewhere between eight weeks and nine months.
And chief, we did go over that, you know, at the, at the retreat, but given the fact that we actually have some audience members and who knows out there, maybe you could give us a quick and dirty about what this will do and what your intention is for increasing the force by three, three officers?
Yeah, sure. Our, our primary needs are really to, to increase level of service as compared to the level of service that we're providing now, which we think is, is, is adequate. However, with, with things changing and the increase in activity in the metro area and some issues that are, are driving criminal activities, certainly in our neighboring communities, we are hoping to increase the level of service primarily around two areas. One is increasing our staffing in the overnight hours. We often run at minimum staffing, which with these two, these two new officers going to, to patrol would increase the minimum staffing so that we are, we could be, the future minimum staffing is what full staffing looks like in twenty twenty-four as, as of current. And in addition to that, adding to our investigative capacity so that we can clear or solve more crimes that we're investigating and throw additional resources at that, at those prolonged investigations. We're seeing, certainly seeing more of those, and the, not so much in volume, but in complexity.
Right, thank you. And then I had a question, not Ms. Landis, but on section nine point one oh of the charter amendment, which is applicable for this. I don't know if you want to, I don't want to get, if people have issues about the actual police officer aspect, I don't, they can talk about that, but otherwise, then I'll ask this other question.
I, I just have another comment or two about what we're talking about right now before we go into charter. First off, I guess I'd like to say to council and staff and our residents, this is a huge win for our city to, to have these new officers, assuming we're successful in recruiting them. We have been telling our chief of police, even his predecessor chief of police, when you need help, if you need more resources, if you need gear or personnel, come to us. You need new cars, come to us, because we, we find this to be one of our, if not the top priority in the city. At least I do. And I think, I think all of us share that same sentiment. So this is a win for our city, and I, I'm, I'm thrilled that you have, that the police department, the chief has come to us and requested these officers. We've been asking for years now, seven years I've been on council, tell us what you need, tell us when you need it, and you're probably never going to get a no. That's how important we feel about this topic. So thank you for bringing it to us and presenting it to us, and I look forward to voting on this tonight.
Absolutely.
Earl, now, to your technical comment, question?
Unless anybody else has something.
Any other questions, comments?
I would, sorry, I would just reiterate what you just said, Dan, and agree, you know, none of us are police experts, so we do rely on our chief to tell us what needs to be done. Councilor Holen.
This, this question, you know, and obviously, this is part of the charter, and I think it's a remnant from something that we never understood before, which is that the city can never have a deficit budget, which is not true. We've talked, I've talked about that before. It's not true. We can't go into the reserves, and we can't exhaust ourselves and be in a deficit situation overall with regard to the city. And when I read this, I was surprised, because as I read this, it says, unless it's an emergency, we can't have a supplemental appropriation during the year unless the revenues and anticipated revenues exceed what the original budget was and basically cover that, which is what, that's why you went through this whole thing. I think that's really, I mean, unless I'm reading it wrong, I mean, I think that is really, really outdated and, and problematic. I mean, it basically forces us that if we don't have those revenues and we wanted to have a supplemental appropriation, we'd start to figure out a way to make, to jam it into the emergency endangering of the public safety. Now, I recognize that we'd have to amend the charter, and that's a, that's a, but this, this is a problem. This, this is, this thing is problematic.
Well, so is it problematic because, are you saying that you disagree that the charter says this, or are you saying that you think the way the charter specifies it is a, is a problem?
Yeah, the way, that this language is a problem.
Okay.
It can be a problem at some point in time.
It's not a problem tonight.
It's not a problem tonight, but it's.
Because we have the excess funds.
But again, as, as I always say, I don't spend all my time reading all of our ordinances in the charters. It's like when it comes up, then I read it and I go, you've got to be kidding me, surprise. Because, well, just like this, although this probably could be shoved into the, endangering the public and safety, but, you know, from time to time, we have things that pop up where we need a supplemental during the year, and there may not be additional revenues at that point in time, but we're still fine because of the surpluses that we, that we have in our, in our.
Because of our reserves.
In our, yeah, in our reserves.
Right. I think that's a good point.
So, you know, and again, I know it's really, really difficult to change the charter, but we got to abide by this. We are tonight, but it's a problem, in my view.
So when you started your comments by saying that it's not true that we have to adopt, well, that we can't adopt a deficit budget?
Right, that's, that's true. We don't have to, we cannot.
It's just this about, this section about additional appropriations that basically says we can't allocate any additional appropriations beyond the revenue that.
Right. And I think where this comes from is because that, for whatever reason, that's what everybody always understood, was that we have to have a balanced budget, and so therefore, that, this would make sense under that circumstance.
Right.
But knowing that that's not what the Colorado statute provides, which isn't true, this is unnecessary, and this actually would be problematic if, you know, I mean, you know, something comes up, there's a High Line canal in the middle of the, something pops up that says, hey, we, we need to get going, we need to do something. This conceivably would cause us to struggle.
Your, your point is that we've got, we've got several million dollars. Your, your point is that we've got, we've got several million dollars in reserves that could be tapped in the event that we needed to, but the way it's written now, you're worried that we, the way it's written, we shouldn't go below our budgeted expenditure for that year.
For that current year, exactly.
Even though we have 16 million in reserves.
So interestingly, we could budget to spend that money in the initial budget cycle.
But you can't do it mid-year.
But you can't do it mid-year.
Which is why, which is why Director Farman went through this, you know, adopted budget and showed, he's basically saying, hey, look, we didn't anticipate this additional interest and that's going to cover this, so we're good under 9.10. We don't need, we shouldn't have to do that. We do need to do it based on this, but where would we be right now if in fact the interest rates were 0.1% instead of 5.1%? We wouldn't have that additional interest and we'd be trying to jam it into the emergency thing.
Or we'd be stuck waiting for 2025.
Right, right. Yeah.
That's a good point, Earl.
Counselor Will.
So should we ask staff and Kathy to take a look at this and give us some better recommendations?
Well, I think the only recommendation I think probably is that the charter would need to be amended, right? I mean.
That's the ultimate.
Which, as we know.
Change would be required.
Yeah.
As you know, the charter was written many, many years ago and some of those laws that were put into place are a little bit archaic in, in the way they're worded and it presents problems with us at times. But we do try to always follow the charter and that's what we're doing here. And in case we ever had a situation like that, if it doesn't fall under emergency, you're right, then it may not be able to be done at that time. But the actual language probably should read, unless you have an emergency or sufficient reserves, which would.
That would cover it.
Easily resolve the problem.
Right.
To amend the charter requires a vote of the city?
Yes.
Yes. And let me ask one other question because it says, authorizes the city council to make additional appropriations by ordinance, which is what we're doing tonight. Is there a way to make additional appropriations other than by ordinance? Just by ordinance? There's not another way to do it?
Okay. So I think that this probably does warrant more discussion. I'm not sure the appropriate format for that. Do we want to, I don't know, a study session or a?
Yeah, I think that's something we can add to our study session list and bring it up as to whether we actually want to move forward with that at some point in time or not.
Yeah. So I think you do raise a very valid point. I also think that we would need, given how difficult amending the charter is, we probably would need to give some serious thought to how big of a problem it is.
Yeah, it hasn't really been, I mean, you know, it hasn't been an issue, but you can just see, like I say, when something pops up and we look at this stuff, that's when we look at and go, oh, wow, I didn't know it said that.
I will say in, in the five years I've been here, it's never come up, but.
Yeah.
Well, the interesting thing, and I don't remember this, I know that, I don't think it's come up in this term on my council, but in my previous term, we had mid-year appropriations. And I actually don't remember, not that we didn't do it, I don't remember us sitting there and going, hey, we just found this additional revenue this year and justifying it that way. I don't remember it. We may have, presumably we did, but I know that we had mid-year additional appropriations.
Well, and the other thing that this doesn't really account for is that we may, in those other years, we may not have had additional revenues, but we've run a surplus over a million dollars every year that I've been on council, which is 12 years. So it doesn't, what it doesn't even allow for is reduction of expenditures, much less dipping into reserves, right? If we had something come in under budget.
I think that's a question, if we've got reduction in expenditures.
Yeah, and that's not in here either. It just says if the revenues exceed the anticipated revenue. So it is a very good question and I think it warrants some additional discussion as to whether that, you know, is something we need to tackle now, is it, because it would have, we'd have to tackle it pretty quickly if we wanted to tackle it now.
Right.
So, okay.
But I'm pleased to see that it seems to be a good question, which means I accidentally said something important.
You always do, Earl.
Every once in a while.
That's why we always look to you. As soon as it comes up, we look to you.
Job security for Earl.
Exactly. Okay, is there any further discussion than I would entertain a motion?
I move to approve Council Bill 3, Series 2024, a bill for an ordinance of the city of Cherry Hills Village amending the 2024 budget and approving a supplemental appropriation on first reading.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Counselor Holden?
Aye.
Counselor Will?
Aye.
Counselor Sheldon?
Aye.
Counselor Blum?
Aye.
Counselor McGuann?
Aye. That passes unanimously. So since we have a captive audience today, I would just like to share that ordinance, as you may have noticed, that all of the other votes we took were just voice votes. Ordinances are roll call votes because that's how we enact laws. Ordinances always have two votes. This was the first of those two votes. The two votes have to be separated in different meetings. So there will be a second hearing on this exact issue, a second reading on this year issue. And then ordinances have a public hearing component as well. So when this comes up for second reading?
Mayor, some do.
Some do. This one will not, budget does though, right?
The budget does, yes.
Yes. And appropriations, yes?
Um, we were looking in the past ordinances for supplemental appropriations in the charter and I'm not seeing that a hearing is required.
Well, then maybe not. I stand corrected.
Could I have?
We'll double check though.
Since, since we do have a captive audience, we're so excited about this. Can I have the chief, because I don't want there to be a misconception.
You're actually not captive, you can leave at any time.
That, that we are not well-staffed currently. I, I understand you, you want more staff, but can, in the past, you've given us some statistics that talk about how many police officers we have per capita compared to other municipalities in, in the state. And I think that's important for people to hear because I don't want people to think, what have we been running with, around without enough police officers? Can you, can you address that, please?
Yeah, of course. So just in terms of general staffing, we currently are authorized 25 police officers. We currently are staffed at 24 officers. One specialized assignment is currently unfilled. Our patrol function is fully staffed, which it, as I've mentioned many times before, nobody else in the, in the metro area certainly can say that. We're really proud of that. In terms of just staffing model, one indication, one piece of the puzzle is, that is often looked at is officers per 1,000. In our region, the Rocky Mountain region, the average is 1.7 officers per 1,000. And I don't have quick math skills, but we're much higher than that. We run about four officers per 1,000 people. So we are remarkably staffed in that capacity. Just in terms of how that looks operationally, when these new positions come onboard and are attached to, the overnight shift is, is where I envision these positions going. You're talking about five officers for six and a half square miles. That is unheard of. That is absolutely unheard of. In my previous organization, we would run six for 34 square miles. So to have five for six and a half square miles is, is an increase in level of service. So I think to your, to your question and really your point, how does that compare to other organizations, other jurisdictions? We have been adequately staffed to meet the level of service that we were endeavoring to meet. What we want to do moving forward and really by demand of our, of our, the, the community at large, the residents, is should we look at increasing levels of service at a time when fear is high, crime has risen in the metro area? Can we do, and can we offer more to the community? Not just in terms of patrol opportunities, but specialized assignments. We've, as you know, we've stood up a community partnership unit. We've, we've stood up a dedicated traffic unit. We want to increase our investigative capacity. So those other additional ancillary responsibilities that law enforcement organizations have for a full service agency to the degree that we are, there, we have found and identified an opportunity to increase level of service. And that's taken a year of real analysis for me. You know, we've had this conversation for many months, excuse me. And there are a lot of baselines to look at to, to determine adequate staffing and we have always met those. What we now want to do is, is offer services to this community that we haven't been able to offer previously, thereby the request for additional staff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the 25 officers are two-legged officers, right? Doesn't include our one four-legged officer?
It doesn't, but I mean, if you want to talk about funding another dog, we could certainly do that too.
Okay.
Next week, by the way.
Oh, is that one? For people who don't know, we are, the K-9 officers are returning to Cherry Hills Village. We evidently used to have K-9 officer.
Tuco.
Tuco. Will finish his training and be ready to go next week. That's exciting. Oh, and well, and the drone, yes, and we added another drone in the regular budget, right? So, thank you so much for all that you do. It is a very critical part of our city. We'll now move on to reports. We'll start with the mayor's report. As I'm sure you all know, the legislative session concluded and the bills that we were most concerned about unfortunately did pass and have been signed by the governor. Those included the accessory dwelling unit bills, the transit oriented community bill, parking requirements bill, and the occupancy limit bill. I've written an article about all of that for the Crier that'll be coming out. Another interesting piece of legislation that came in the final hours of the legislature was the property tax reform bill. And it basically has, it's a very long, complicated bill as always, anything with property taxes, but there's basically two parts. There's a, a cap to the increase in property taxes, but that cap only applies to statutory cities. So it doesn't apply to Cherry Hills Village. And the kind of more significant piece is that it decouples the residential assessment rate from, for school districts from all other governmental entities that rely on property tax, like special districts, local governments, counties, et cetera. So since 50% on average of your property tax bill is the school district, that residential assessment rate stays the same. So most people won't, at least 50% of your bill isn't going to change. It does slightly reduce and like by a fraction of a percent, the residential assessment rate for all other local governments, but since that's a relatively small part of your property tax bill anyway, the difference might be that, not be that noticeable. And then on top of that, since property values have increased, you'll probably still see an increase on your property tax bill. It just won't be as big as it might otherwise have been. But anybody who's expecting to open that envelope and see the number go down, that's probably not going to happen. The other really interesting caveat is that this property tax bill was a deal struck to try to ward off some ballot initiatives, citizen-led ballot initiatives that will be on the ballot in November. And unfortunately, that deal did not, did not kill those ballot initiatives. Or unfortunately for the governor and his legislative team. So those ballot initiatives will still be on the ballot. There are no fewer than 10 property tax related ballot initiatives working their way through the initiative process. Only one of them has actually already qualified for the ballot. But if they all qualify, your ballot in November is going to be a book. Then add to that, there are a lot of other ballot initiatives on other topics, but also interestingly, there are three ballot initiatives that have passed the title board. They've been challenged in the Colorado Supreme Court. All three of them codify in the state constitution that land use is the purview of local government. And they prevent the state from basically imposing anything on cities that enact their own land use. So very interesting to see if those will, you know, once it gets, the next step in the process, if it gets approved by the Supreme Court, is to go out and get ballot signatures, which is a challenge and, you know, time is running out for that. But that would be an interesting development as well. So.
Mayor, before you move on then, just when you were talking about real estate taxes, and you're absolutely right, they probably won't go down, they just won't go up as much. But since there's people here and maybe people listening, I don't know if, again, if you're paying attention to what's been going on in our community. I mean, it's, it's continuing to go like this. So the next reassessment, right now by my reckoning, is going to go up just as much as the last one did. Just in case you want to know, I mean, there was a property a month ago, just a property, sold for 4 million. Property on, just on the next street, same exact same property, two weeks later, 5 million. I mean, it is going like this. And so that's good news. Hey, your properties are going up and taxes are going to keep going up.
Well, and I do want to, you know, there, there, I want everyone to know that we are all sensitive to that. And there may come a time when, we, we do control the property taxes within Cherry Hills Village, and there may come a time where we need to do something about that. The reason we're not doing anything about it right now is because there are 10 ballot initiatives that could dramatically change that picture. And so if we, given the restrictions in place, if we take action now without knowing what might come November, I think that would be very short sighted.
Well, and in addition, and you're absolutely right, we're always looking at it, we're always thinking about it, but the Cherry Hills residential taxes are not the biggest portion of your tax bills. I mean, school districts, number one, right? Fire district.
Yeah, 50%. And county, the library district.
Right, absolutely. But nevertheless, it's, it's something that we would do, what we can do.
Yes. So that is, oh, and the other thing, I did attend the Colorado Municipal League District Meeting up in North Glen, and Cherry Hills Village is hosting the Colorado Municipal League Fall District Meeting. We don't have a date for that yet, but we will be hosting it here. We will start down here with Counselor Holden with the reports.
I don't really have anything of interest to report, but given that the Alsburgers are in District 2, not that we're all not interested, but I'm, staff, I know that Jan's looking into it, so is staff looking into all of those issues with regard to both the gas line situation, but also evidently an easement issue with regard to our trail going around the, going around the pond?
Yes. Short answer is yes. We're aware of those, both those situations. Obviously, Jan is, is doing what he can to expedite the permits on, with regards to the gas line and make sure that that gets inspected and closed up and hopefully the homeowners will be happy with that. With regards to whether there's a penalty for that contractor, currently our, our, in order for us to assess a penalty, we'd actually have to take that contractor to court, have a citation, go through a court process. But I have talked to our community development director and potentially we could add a, an ordinance that would allow us to add additional fees when they come in with the permit for those that have failed to apply for the permit in a timely manner. We could add that and avoid the results of a court action.
Because I know that, I mean, it wasn't too long ago, you know, we were looking at permits and keeping within line of permits, but it was all directed at the homeowner as opposed to the contractors. It seems to me that at the end of the day, if contractors are not following what they're supposed to be doing, there should be some sort of penalty for them with regard to doing biz in our city, it would seem, but.
Well, we'll assess whoever pulls the permit, but at the end of the day, a lot of times those contractors will just pass that on to the homeowner.
Right.
That's what I was going to say. I, I would assume it's the homeowner who has the responsibility in the end.
Right.
And then turns around and has some kind of a contractual relationship with the contractor.
So it's tricky.
So it's, yeah, in the end, it's the homeowner's responsibility, but I understand their frustration.
And then with, with regard to, oh, sorry.
I was going to have Jay answer the second part of the. I was going to have Jay answer the second part of the question.
Okay, and, and just to say, because it seems to me, it's just a question of us talking to the Buell HOA and just saying, hey, let's figure out who, who owns what and who has what here, right?
I don't think that's the question. We know what we maintain and what is in our easement. It's, the lake is drawing these geese. We don't have any means to remove goose poop from an unhardened trail or the staff to do that. And, and we've talked to them, we feel it's the HOA's responsibility to do as we have done here and hire someone to keep the geese away. We only have the trail and trees and, and grass around the outside.
I get you.
We don't have the lake. And so we have had that conversation with the HOA and they continue to do nothing.
I, I get you.
But unless council wants staff to do what we've done at our property, we've hired the, the goose lady and she chases the geese off on a normal basis.
It's a very high-tech solution. She brings dogs and they chase the geese away. That's legit.
She's not out there running around.
And it works pretty well, actually.
Yeah, it's an expensive endeavor. It's about $14,000 a year for us to do just.
Well, and I, I don't know that we would have the authority to allow dogs to run free on what else's property.
Oh, no, no, we wouldn't. I mean, that's, we don't have any ability to do that. I mean, so, okay, you're, but you're on top of it.
We could, yeah, and we can continue to talk with the HOA, but we've, we've, uh, just as our residents have stated, it seems to be a big circle.
Yeah, I guess I'm sure it does feel like that.
And, uh, and then the only other thing, and again, I know, and everything that you said in the beginning, Mayor, was right, I know that there have been some instructions that we're looking into, um, the gun ordinance situation. But is staff, I mean, I know I sent an email to the city manager that I think got passed on to, uh, to the city attorney with regard to specific things that I think need to be briefed and reviewed and provided to council. So that process is underway, is that correct?
Yes, we've just initiated that. Uh, Chief Lyons is well-versed on a lot of the laws that are going on. And then we'll continue to have discussions with our city attorney and, and evaluate what's the best option for us to move forward.
Sure, okay, good. Because obviously that's, that's important. And I knew that a lot of it is, it's, you're well-versed, we're not. Okay, good, thank you. I don't have anything else, thank you.
All right. Mayor Proton Will.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Good meeting with SMA, Ms. Ishwari. I was a trustee there and a former parent as well, so I can relate to your concerns. It's all been said, so I won't, won't use your time being redundant. The, uh, also had Dr. Cog meetings. And again, most of that was, um, procedural. There was a, a, uh, presentation of Phase One of the, uh, housing study that they're doing. The, uh, not a lot of revelations in there. Uh, half a million houses needed by 2050, but the construction is keeping pace with the growth in demand. Um, on the other hand, we're not digging into the backlogs, uh, growth in certain segments. The full report is on the website, Dr. Cog, uh, so, uh, feel free. Or if you need a link or you need any help, I'll be happy to, to, um, help out there. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Sheldon.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, my update I want to provide, since we again have this captive audience. You're not all captive.
Exactly, they're like, never come back.
I want to provide a quick update on our, um, you must think we never get anyone in here, which we sometimes don't. Sometimes it's literally empty in there. But, um, I'm going to give you a, a quick update on cell coverage in the city. Um, last summer, uh, we embarked on, I wrote an article in the Crier last summer saying, I'm standing on a volcano five miles off the island of Santorini, and there were people all over the place on their phones, yet we're in one of the wealthiest zip codes in the world right here and you can't get cell coverage. We're working on it. The city is actively working on it. This council has authorized our staff to, uh, be working on things right now. And where we are right now is that we have selected, uh, what's called a neutral host provider. That is a middleman, if you will, so that the city is not in a cell coverage business. We have engaged, uh, with a neutral host provider who will then turn around and execute leases with the actual carriers, AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, Verizon, assuming they should all choose to go on to these, uh, this infrastructure on these poles that the neutral host provider will build. Let me repeat that. The neutral host provider will build the infrastructure, build and pay for the infrastructure. This is a, what we're, what we have, what we have planned right now is a solution to our cell coverage that costs the city very little money at the end of the day. We're, we're going to be spending very little, if any, money on infrastructure. We have very little money that we have to allocate for administration of this. We do have some studies and some reports and things, but they are what we would consider soft costs. We're not building 100-foot towers and we're not trenching miles and miles of fiber. That's a great thing. That's a great thing that we have this neutral host provider and that they are out there right now negotiating with the carriers. The big next step, though, is to get approval from our citizens. We can't go do this as this body right here. So what you're going to be seeing over the next several months is this shifting from a, uh, city-led effort to a smaller group-led effort that is made up of volunteers, um, that are going to go out and door-to-door, uh, phone calls, neighborhood HOAs, groups, where we're going to be going out seeking education and support from, uh, education to and support from the community whereby we are going to be looking for the citizens to, to vote in November on the ballot. On your, on your general election ballot, there will be a, uh, at least one question that is going to, um, ask if you would like to improve cellphone coverage by allowing the city to enter into leases longer than five years in city-owned space. So if we have a city-owned property and right now, the way our, our charter reads, which is our governing documents for the city, we are not allowed to enter into a lease that is longer than five years. The carriers, T-Mobile, Verizon, AT&amp;T, they will not enter into a five-year lease. They want a 20-year lease, maybe a 30-year lease. They want four, five-year options. They want, they want to know that if they're going to be putting the investment into these, this infrastructure, that they're going to be able to reap the rewards of that investment over the course of a great period of time. And we do too, frankly, as citizens. I think we want to know that they're there for a while and not going to just come off the pole in five years and not be providing cell coverage anymore. So we are going to be bringing that out to the citizens, uh, in November and be on the lookout for communication from council and from citizens of the village who are volunteering to get involved in this process. If you're interested in getting involved, feel free to reach out to me or reach out to our staff here at the city, um, because we are going to be looking for volunteers to help make this real, make it happen this November. So, um, if you have any questions on that, I know, um, City Manager Thorson's going to give us an update on another current happening with, uh, with focus groups when it comes to you. But that's my update on that.
Do you have anything?
Um, I did want to suggest that maybe we ask, um, our staff on a totally separate topic, uh, staff, including Chief Lyons, to potentially give us some options for, um, the Second Amendment issue, uh, the thousand-foot buffer issue. I think it's, I think we better not go through our, all of our comments here and not at least address it. Um, I think we need to move this along and, and come to some closure to it one way or the other. However, if we bring it to a vote, I think we, we need to, uh, respect our citizens' wishes to talk about it.
Yes, and the staff is already working on pulling that information together.
Very good, that's all I have, thank you.
Dan, thanks for stealing my thunder, but I, my question, I'm surprised, as other people are, that we're not covered by the federal statute. My question is how quickly, and I'm totally in favor of doing something to adopt that. How quickly and what's the procedure that we go down the road now to try and adopt something?
So first, let me, we are covered by the federal statute. It's just that our police, our local police don't enforce federal, don't have jurisdiction to enforce federal law. So there are federal law enforcement that could come and enforce that law.
FBI or some, but so what do we need to do so our local police can do that also?
Well, that's what, that's what the staff is working on. You know, there, it's, it is a complicated issue because it's a jurisdictional issue. If local laws are prosecuted locally and state laws are prosecuted usually at the district court level, right, with the Rabo County and, um, so there's a question. And, and this is all the stuff that I'm not an expert on. Um, and thus, this is what we need our staff to come back and say, here's some options and how this would work and how it would play out. And, you know, if you had a local ordinance, how would that work? How would prosecution of that work and et cetera, so.
So I, I'm for one, in favor of pursuing this diligently now. And, because the question, we don't have federal officers that can enforce it here. Uh, we've got a great local police staff and if they can't enforce it, federal laws do no good for us. So I think we need to pursue this on a, uh, priority basis going forward. So I don't know which, which staff is working on, is it legal staff? Are they working on, are you looking at this, or how we go about this?
Well, I wonder, I wonder if I can just, because I'm going to add this. I mean, that's evidently, I didn't make it clear when I made my comments, but I'm just going to read this because I, I think it's important that they know that this has been going on for some time and, and it has been by a number of folks. My email basically, basically that I said, "Council's going to address this. In order to do so, I think we need to review existing laws that might impact consideration of the issue. This would include any state constitutional provisions or statutes, as well as any current CHV ordinances, if any, laws, ordinances passed by other Colorado municipalities, as well as court challenges to such laws and ordinances and Second Amendment considerations. Beyond the legal constitutional information noted above, there will obviously be other factors to consider, such as public safety, such as relevant data on incidents to assess if there's a need, law enforcement impact, impact on staffing, training, et cetera, to enforce an ordinance, penalties, and due process." Um, and I just said, hey, this is going to take some time because we wouldn't just knee-jerk, just do something without doing a thoughtful process and considering the overall framework and the information. So we need to get that information and then move ahead with whatever solutions we think might be necessary to do.
My question is moving, moving forward, it's a priority. I mean, I am the one in sight here, Earl, so you could, uh, expound on that, but I do appreciate that. But I think we need to do it as a priority with all these answers, like the issues that you've raised.
Thank you. Councilor McGuire.
Two quick things. One, I wanted to, uh, congratulate Director Farman for being appointed as a trustee to the investment fund. I think that reflects very well on you and in turn then reflects well on the city. So congratulations, don't screw it up. I'm just kidding about the last part, I know you won't. Um, second, uh, unfortunately, Mr. Bennett just left, but I wanted to thank him for, um, asking that we do this proclamation for ALS. I also wanted to commend your mother. I thought that was, uh, an amazing way to put a very real and visceral face to this horrible disease. And, um, the fact that she was willing to stand up and do that took my breath away. So I wanted to commend her, that's all.
Um, and then I guess I would just add to, to finish out this conversation. I think one thing that we may be able to move on, um, fairly quickly actually, is signage. There is a federal law in place and I think that there are signs that go with that law. And I think that we don't need anybody's permission other than our own to put signs up. And so I don't know whether people are in agreement with that, but that is part of that federal law. So maybe we could look into that as well and that doesn't require ordinances.
I think that makes some sense, but I mean, again, for instance, one of the things was, is hey, put the sign at where the buffer zone is. Well, the buffer zone is going to be on private property.
Well, no, and so the buffer don't, yeah.
Let me just, let me just finish. All I want to say is, is again, we need to look into this in a thoughtful manner to figure out how do we do this? I think it's a great idea. My guess is we will end up doing signs, but it's not just knee-jerk do it. It is figure out what the impacts are, how to do it.
No, but the law doesn't include private property. The federal law doesn't include private property. So it's only on public property that's within 1,000 feet of a school.
I don't know, I'm not certain what you just said. I thought, I thought the federal law is, is you're not allowed to bring a firearm within 1,000 feet of.
But excluding private property. So if you live in a house that backs up to a school, you can walk around your yard with your firearm. But, um, so I think it actually is pretty clear.
Okay.
But.
All right, so then.
Yes, private property would make it very problematic.
But then that's one of the things, which is to go that the buffer zone really, for the most part, is going to be 100 feet, 150 feet. Because private property is, almost every one of our schools is within 150, 200 feet of the school. And that's what you're saying at the end of the day.
Yes, but we, and we could put up signs wherever, we don't have to put them on the buffer zone line, right? We can put them wherever we want.
Well, wherever our public, wherever our public property is.
Yes, our private, our public property. So I think that would be something that, obviously we can't do it tomorrow and it does still need research and et cetera. But that's something that we can do much more quickly, I think, than, um, so. And so if maybe we could have those as two separate, parallel efforts, that would be great. And I guess I just also wanted to congratulate our local graduates of colleges and high schools. I know that at least one, Lily Sheldon, will be graduating tomorrow morning. And for anyone else who may have, um, family members graduating and moving to the next step of their life, congratulations to all of them. And with that, I would entertain emotion. Oh, staff, duh, yeah, sorry.
Easily overlooked.
Not, actually, not as easy as it might seem.
Um, well, first of all, with regards to cell coverage, the city has been conducting focus group meetings with, uh, members of the public. We had a group of about 10 people here on Monday night. We have another group of 10 coming in on Wednesday. Uh, our consultant, uh, is getting their input, getting their questions and, uh, taking, uh, straw polls of their feelings of the issues. Uh, everything from the height of the polls to the location to, um, whether they would be supportive of a, a ballot measure that is likely to be coming in on November 4th or 5th. Uh, so that's ongoing. With regards to, first of all, thanks for making this a priority. It really was a priority as well. Uh, but at the same time, I think, as mentioned, we want to be cautious and, and not overstep. But at the same time, we want to review what's out there. I know the state just passed a law and the governor signed it, I think today, if I'm correct, regarding, um, uh, carrying, carrying guns, uh, within certain municipal buildings and things like that. So we want to take a look at those laws that have been recently passed, the federal law, as well as how to craft something that meets our city's needs. So it won't be done tomorrow, but it'll certainly be done in expedient fashion. And we'll try to get something back to you as soon as we can. That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. City Attorney. Director Farman.
I just want to thank City Council again for their support of the new investment pool and sponsoring me to be on the board. I'm really excited about the opportunity, but I'm most excited to see how it's going to benefit the city. So I appreciate that.
Thank you. Clerk Gillespie.
Um, on August 6th, we have, um, a candidate information session and also National Night Out. We're going to try to schedule those so they don't completely overlap so that people have the chance to do both before that evening's, uh, council meetings. Just want to get that out on everyone's calendar.
Thank you. Chief Lyons.
Thank you. Just a few things. I, I mentioned, um, a few minutes ago about, uh, our canine hitting the street next week. He does graduate on, uh, Friday, the 31st. Uh, and just as a reminder for council, we talked about increasing levels of service. So, uh, the resource that, uh, that the police service dog brings to our community. Um, as a reminder, he is dual-purpose certified and nationally certified. And so that includes, um, the patrol aspect, which is apprehension, article search, and human tracking, as well as, uh, the narcotics detection, which includes, uh, fentanyl, cocaine, methamphetamine, and heroin. Um, and he has already received his national certification in that and he'll be nationally certified on all dimensions next Friday. So, uh, really excited about that. Um, as you know, we are toward the end of our inaugural class of our Citizens Police Academy that has gone remarkably well. Um, and you'll get an invitation from me, but I wanted to get on your calendars as early as I could. Their graduation will be here in this room on, uh, June 20th at 6:00 PM. You are all invited to attend, should you be able to do that.
You are all invited to attend, should you be able to do that. And then, just as an acknowledgement, last week was National Police Week. I had the privilege of going to Washington DC with several members of my staff to honor those officers who died in the line of duty in 2023. And that included 282 names added to the wall in Washington DC. It is the only monument in the nation's capital that grows every year. And an officer is killed or dies in the line of duty every 53 hours, so, in America. So, just an opportunity to acknowledge what that week means to us as an organization, to the profession. And the week, including May 15th, has been recognized as National Police Week since 1962. So, thank you.
Thank you. And Director Goldie.
Good evening. I'd like to report that we had a wonderful spring cleanup again. Saw hundreds of residents. It's amazing how excited residents get about Free Trash Day to throw everything out. We have, we're starting to make a dent. Our paint pickup is about half of what it used to be. So, everyone has been emptying out their garages and basements of their paint. But our computer electronics and just general yard rubbish continue to overflow our dumpsters. So, great event. It's great to be at that event. It's, you know, so interactive with so many residents that we don't interact with on a normal basis, and they're all so happy. So, that was great. You'll also notice on your monthly reports, the last page of the Public Works Report is brand new. It, after our council retreat, and we talked so much about right-of-way issues and encroachments, we have been working with our code officers on more enforcement on the right-of-way. And so, that last page now is a summary of any contacts they've had with right-of-way issues each month. They're not all encroachment issues. They're all construction, encroachment, all different issues. So, we continue to push that forward as council has requested and make that a priority to minimize those illegal encroachments in the right-of-way.
So, I did have a question when I reviewed that. You know, our HOA maintains the trees along Clarkson and Quincy, at the corner of Clarkson and Quincy, the northeast corner of Clarkson and Quincy, Mockingbird Lane. And I know we have guys out there that trim the trees periodically. Do they need to pull, I mean, they're on, they're in an easement that we've granted to the city, but that we still retain, we retain title of the property, we've given the city an easement on it. Do they need to get a permit?
Yes, they should get a permit because they are on the trail. They will, they can get a blanket permit yearly for that, but yes, they do need a permit to park on the trail, even though, like you said, it's...
Oh, it's because the truck parks on the...
Yeah, on the trail itself.
If they park it on the street, but they move, you can't park between the trail and the fence line there to trim the trees, then do they need?
Yeah, they still really need a permit, just so we can track. A lot of the times, if it's too wet and the tree company decides to drive up there and rut the city part of that, we need to know where people are and if damage occurs.
I will let the president of our HOA know that when I make dinner tonight.
All right.
So, they need to make sure, I understand, they need the permit to park or drive on that area, but not to just trim, not to trim the trees?
It's just to park on the trail.
It's the access part that's, yeah, okay.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that we're, you can go out and like mow your grass without getting a permit.
Yes. That's all I have.
Thank you. Well, with that, unless there's anything else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Seeing no objection, we stand adjourned.